And I came here in 1986 to run it for myself. I signed the papers and I was owner of The Red Barn Incorporated. People come in here for the experience, more so than I think anything else. And they love the fact that somebody's actually taking the time to listen. Maybe you learn in proportion to how much you listen and care. If you can find that balance between doing what you love, that isn't really work, that might pay the bills, and can resonate with people, and actually to some extent help people. Without my customers, I would be doing what I don't love, guaranteed.
Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting with the Waterville City Council. Anybody that's on the agenda, they are the classics, leave out back. Before we get started, I would just like to ask for Chairman, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is community notes. Community notes is a time where if anybody has something they'd like to speak about that is not currently listed on the agenda, now would be the time to come forward and do so. And we just asked that you just state your name and what your question or announcement might be.
My name's Scott McHale. I'm here with the Central Main Fourth of July. I'd like to invite everybody on October 28th at 8:00 PM at the Winslow FFW. We're going to be holding a Halloween costume contest. It's an adult content party. It's 21 and over. But the cost is $10 a person. You can pick up your tickets currently at the Winslow FFW downstairs at the bar, or you can also make a $10 donation the night of the dance. We're going to have Mike Davis DJing the dance. We also have, we have three prizes, all donated by local businesses. The $100 prize was donated by Enchanted Urban Tea. The second $50 prize was donated by You Broke It. The third $25 prize was donated by Frame Makers. And we also are going to be having a limbo contest. And that prize was a gift certificate donated, a $25 gift certificate donated by The Last Unicorn. So I encourage everybody, please come out and, like I said, October 28th, 8:00 PM at the Winslow FFW. So if you can't pick up tickets in advance, you can make a $10 donation at the door. You don't have to wear a costume, but costumes are encouraged. And you never know, you might, you might be the one that wins the $100 prize.
Scott, is there a, like a Facebook event yet out there that people could share on their social media?
Ah, yes, it is. Hang on one second, I can't find that one.
There's no idea what it's called.
Yeah, I can't remember what he put it under. Okay, it's, it's under on this, he has it under as a Halloween Costume Dance. And the date's October 25th. And the actual picture of it, it's, I can't get any bigger, but the top picture is like basically three pumpkins all lit up, carved pumpkin, jack-o'-lanterns. And like I said, it's under Halloween Costume Dance. And on the side it says October 28th, so. And all the information is on there as well. And I'd also like to encourage you to please stop in and thank the four local Waterville businesses that generously donated the cash prizes and the gift certificates. So thank you, and I hope you all can attend. It's going to be a very fun night.
Mike, are you coming up?
Yes, I wanted to take this moment to introduce Daniel Bradstreet.
Dan.
Making him sure. Dan is our new code enforcement officer. He started Monday, and we all have high hopes. I know he does too. Special thanks to Garth, because Garth will continue with us pretty much off and on right up until January 1st, which is good, because hopefully between now and then, there are a number of things will come up where Dan will be able to work through them with Garth, understand how things go on here. Welcome.
Great, welcome. Welcome door, happy to have you.
Did you say code enforcement or security?
Yeah. I don't give it its size.
I'm not arguing with my brother.
Actually, as a note of interest, Dan's brother, Dan? Adam is code enforcement officer at Winslow. So I think that, that's a good thing.
Good teamwork.
Bits back and forth, and only serve to strengthen the ties that we have with Winslow even more than what they currently have. Any questions?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Mayors, who else I may?
Yes.
I'd just like to mention that we're starting in-person absentee voting here at City Hall on Tuesday, October 9th, here at City Hall during regular business hours. I would also note that we purchased some lawn signs and we put a few of them around town pointing out our rebuilding location at Thomas College. So try to get the word out about that as well if you, if you will. We're putting it out on the website and Facebook. We'll have an ad in the paper on and on and on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for community notes? I guess we'll move on. Disclosure of conflict of interest, that's why we were waiting, because it's actually a separate item. Is there anybody here have a conflict of interest on tonight's agenda they'd like to disclose? Great, we'll move on. First up is the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Send me.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unfinished business, order 141-2017?
An order providing for acceptance of city street extension. Being required ordered by Waterville City Council acting as municipal officers that an extension in the length of Meadow Drive be approved as a continuation of an already accepted city street in accordance with the attached legal description and development plan.
So moved. Second, would you like to come up? Is that why you're waving there?
I have a plan if anyone would like to see it, but otherwise, we're just excited to be able to offer 15 or 17 new sites. Of all the homes we've built, some of these sites are the best we've ever had, so.
That's great. Well, thank you for all your hard work and making this happen and the time when we know that housing is an issue in Waterville, and we have a builder who's helping us address that issue. We appreciate it. No discussion, we'll take a vote. All in, let's take a roll call.
Thank you. Counselor Sohl?
Yes.
Counselor Lessig?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
All six in favor and zero opposed.
Next is order 142-2017.
I'm hoping for a motion to read by my.
Move to read by title only.
All in favor?
An order providing for approval of forfeiture.
Move to adopt. Move to adopt. Any discussion? I'll take a roll call.
Counselor Sohl?
Yes.
Counselor Lessig?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
All six in favor and zero opposed.
Order 143-2017.
Move to read by title only.
All in favor?
An order providing for approval of forfeiture.
Move to adopt. Second. What happens with the panelists now here? Is there any discussion on this? I'll roll call for roll call.
Counselor Sohl?
Yes.
Counselor Lessig?
Yes.
Counselor Mayhew?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Counselor Dupont?
Yes.
All six in favor and zero opposed.
Can I just quickly interject that on Channel 5 News tonight, they had the story about the Waterville Police and the excellent work they've done recently with their drug charges.
Thank you for bringing that up. All right, we're going to move on to new business, and we are at order 146-2017.
An order providing for approval of a CMP easement core road recreation area. Being hereby ordered by the Waterville City Council acting as municipal officers that the city manager be authorized to execute the attached 30 feet wide easement to allow CMP road to construct a second transmission line.
Any motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Second. Michael.
An easement of this duration, well, actually it's permanent, requires an order, two votes, because it's city property that, that we're providing for an easement, allowing to go into an easement. And it's really for vegetation, control around the CMP transmission line, so it's something that we strongly think is necessary around that transmission line. There are two individuals with us here tonight. If you have any questions about how exactly they do the clearing, I'm sure they'd be glad to answer it, but it's not anything that the folks at Fortin Recreation Area are worried about.
And aren't they paying rent also?
Yes, they are, I think. Is there a dollar value assigned to the easements?
Yes, well, it would be a one-time payment.
One-time payment.
Right. And that actually needs to be made as an amendment for Bill Lee, that the purchase price for the easement is $1,800, and the administrative fees are $1,200. So if anyone is ready, we can make that amendment to this order.
Can we do it as one lump sum?
You can make it as detailing them both out, I think is what he expected.
What he expected.
So just an amendment to add purchase price for the easement at $1,800 and the administrative fees of $1,200. Anybody can make that?
So moved.
Great. Second. All in favor of the amendment?
I'm now moving as amended.
I think a motion move as amended.
Second.
All right.
Second.
Any other questions?
All right, take a vote. All in favor?
Thanks for coming.
Next order, 147-2017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
An order providing for designation of a tax increment financing district, Traptan Road Development, and adoption of related development plan.
Move to adopt.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Let's hear our immediate questions. I just wanted to go to the development program for a minute and point out, but I think of the key sections. If you can go to page five, that's the page that was changed late last week. And the changes in the percent of captured value, so you see the table on that page. The percentages stay the same, 100%, 75%, 50%, but the years change, so it will be 100% captured value years 1 through 20, 21 through 25, 75%, 26 through 30, the end of the TIF term is 50%. Now, when you do that, you reduce the amount of value you're capturing. It affects those tax shifts that I mentioned earlier, that those things that amount to 30 to 35% of the total. So if you go to page eight, right in the middle of the page, okay? So what you see is that if you don't do the TIF, and if the total valuation increase that we estimated, which is a very, very ballpark estimate, but if the district grew in value, the amount that we said it would, we would lose $4,144,000 because of those three negative tax implications, all right? But because we're reducing the percent of total value captured, 100 to 75 to 50, we also increase that total amount of tax shift to $4,779. So that's part one of the changes that you got in the four separate pages. On page 10, if I can keep going, but please interrupt. Page 10 shows you the total acreage, so if someone asks, what is the total acreage in that TIF? It's 144 acres. 136 in the three lots, and the remaining eight and a half acres are the actual road, so the Traptan Road itself is included in the TIF district along with the Junction Road, which is a very short road. Matter of fact, it's the only gravel road in the city of Waterville. And it ends, Junction Road ends right at the Sydney Town Line. So it may be something the city wants to, as part of this TIF district, have money available to improve, possibly even pave Junction Road, because being gravel road, it's, it presents a lot of maintenance problems for us, because we don't have a grader. So that's something that you'll hear more about down the line.
Mike, was there discussion about including a portion of Eight Rod Road on that as well?
Discussion about including Eight Rod Road in that same, I know on this parcel, it looks like we got three parcels, and then one of them is adjacent to Eight Rod Road, and I wasn't sure.
Same seemed like you had Junction Road included along with Traptan Road. I didn't know that there was discussion as to why Eight Rod Road.
Certainly, the Eight Rod Road, work on the Eight Rod Road in terms of resurfacing, could be an approved expense within the TIF district, even though it's not formally included in the 144 acres.
We can still use it for improvements if we need to.
Yeah, because we can certainly make the case that traffic from the new interchange is using Eight Rod Road. And all of a sudden, over time, that road deteriorates as a result of traffic, so I don't see any problem with us being able to extend our eligible uses to that. We did the same thing in the downtown TIF with Water Street and Grove Street.
What's the advantage to including the road itself with the totals? Is there any advantage at all? Or is it just?
No.
No?
I don't think so. So I wanted to point out the maps, and you did that, thank you. The last two pages really are as important as anything else. Thank, yep, the last two. Those show you what we're proposing for eligible activities. So when we collect the TIF revenues, well, we know that a great portion of it is going to go towards the repair of the road. But we're also going to be able to use those TIF revenues for the other items that you see listed on the page here. And it's in many cases kept purposely vague, so we don't get too boxed in to what is allowed and what isn't. It has to be related to the district, but that can encompass quite a broad range of activities. And we can change these over time. We'll see your past, can you amend TIFs as you go along? Yes, you can.
Questions from the councils?
I have comments, but I'll wait.
So my last question is then, we wish them well. We all hope to be here 30 years from now, and, but with all of that, we're not going to see general property tax relief from any revenues from this until the TIF is gone 30 years, is that correct?
No.
Well, it depends on how much gets added.
Okay.
So if all of that added in the next 20 years was the one building that they're going to build, you're correct. Because the revenues from that one building will just barely pay the debt service for the road.
But we wish them well, right?
Yes, we wish them well, absolutely. They've already put $2 million into this whole area, which is huge, so, yes, but we expect a lot more new value gets added. That will definitely help our tax base. But the more you capture, the less of that money you can apply to just your general tax obligations.
With the exception of this, these TIFs were created partly mostly, it was actually supposed to be about bringing jobs and building infrastructure. So the question is, if we have people building these buildings and they're bringing in jobs, are we going to have to extend water lines? We're going to have to do it. We're going to pay for it. We're going to have to pay with road maintenance. And so is it, do we maximize the dollars that we're able to do that with? We have done some terrible credit enhancement agreements in the past, years ago. I know Mike and I, Garvin and I, we've all had the conversation about where out-of-state retail has been subsidized in the city of Waterville in the past. And I think that's an approach that we've not taken over the last several years, because we want to make sure that we are using the funds wisely, and particularly for infrastructure that we're going to have to build anyway in order to create, to bring in jobs.
I just wanted to go on record that I'm in favor of this, okay? In case anybody puts me on the record.
Mike Brad.
So over time, as the amount that we're able to recapture on the valuation decreases, does that also mean that that frees up a certain amount that we can spend on other things? Because does that mean that the percentage we got to spend on approved activities, eligible activities, could be used for non-himal activities?
Right. The money we'd be spending, tax money, could be spending on some of the activities that are listed here, and they're not necessarily just associated with the district, but of general needs. Yes, so it would reduce the tax burden. Let's just take a concrete example. In the eligible uses is listed my position. So we can say, the city can say, so much of my position, 10% of my salary, is related to the administration of TIFs, and therefore, we can use TIF revenue to apply towards the city's costs for adding meetings. That means we use less tax dollars from the other side. So in that respect, we are saving, because they're using TIF money on some things.
It's kind of like the downtown TIF pays a portion of Mike's salary, it pays a portion, I believe, of our finance director's salary, because there was actually an estimate done of how much time they spent working on the economic development in the downtown, and because economic development is an approved activity. Pipe the gas, pipeline TIF is a good example, that's actually being used to repave roads, that need to be repaved anyway, so it can be used for things, even when, even when it's captured.
Right, and then, I guess I've been making more clear. So let's say a billion-dollar building, after 10 years, we can only get 90% of that, and tax, and traffic taxes have to be dedicated to the approved practices, right?
The amount of return, the percentage for this 90%, 50%, whatever, gets determined right here at due time, when the credit enhancement agreement gets proposed to the council between the city and whether it be Traptan Realty or anyone else. And so that amount of percentage return hasn't been done.
Wasn't your question? I'm not describing what I'm thinking.
Oh, okay. Well, you know how to reach me too, so.
And I think a big thing too is the credit enhancement agreement piece, because in a lot of these cases, we're actually not giving money back to developers, and that's kind of the piece where I think people hear TIF, they think we're giving money back on every project, and that's just not the case. We're actually, we're basically sheltering a lot of that money, so we don't have to pay county tax, and it keeps our education subsidy from the state higher, and we can still use that and apply it to the projects, as we do our, our yearly tax payments.
All those developments and more, five minutes.
You're not taking credit?
Well, no. Fine, no it's not.
It's not, as far as I'm concerned, it's worth seven.
Other side of the street?
Both? Yeah.
On the other side, both, or is it all in your board?
But it's in both.
Oh, oh. So since my board's expanding, can we create a late board and cop board?
I don't think so, no.
No.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I do have to tell you, driving the Traptan, the past three or four days has been much better.
Good.
Because it's been paved. Wasn't paved Thursday, and it was all done Friday, so.
Really?
It must have worked quickly, yes. We travel that road every day.
All right, all right.
The state's done some good projects this year.
We have to take a. Good job, but it was good, so.
The second vote, I'd do next council meeting, then it gets shipped off to DCD, Department of Economic Community Development. No telling, John, Harry, how long it takes for the adoption. For instance, the Seaton TIF took 15 months for the state to finally give its blessing, so I'm hoping it's nowhere near that long for this one, because we need to put it in effect to, for the road reconstruction stuff, so. The state has a final word on the adoption. Are copies available? Oh, yes. Yep. Yes.
Here, Mike.
You can have this one.
But the four action papers. Yes, counsel?
I had some comments, being a council member on the commit, on the Tax Increment Financing Committee. The designation of this Tax Increment Financing District within the newly developed I-95 corridor exit off and onto the Traptan Road is a direct, long-term economic development opportunity that will encourage and foster valuable infrastructure to a community that has been struggling with a high tax bill rate, in part because of a service-associated status to other neighboring communities, and in the ever-realistic condition of having a heavy tax-exempt presence in existing private infrastructure. Our city will retain the following chartered percentages of the increased taxable assessed value from all tax, taxable real and personal property within the district as captured assessed value over 30-year term agreement. This is a recommendation of the Tax Increment Financing Committee to capture 100% of the new value in the first 20 years, 75% in the next five, and in the remaining five, 50%. Traptan Road reconstruction costs and sewer line extensions would be minimized, and the appropriated money from this district could further be utilized to maintain the district region in making further enhancements and negate our usage of the municipal general fund. There are no credit enhancement agreements attached to this plan. We have a vested interest in this area, as does Traptan Realty LLC, in making this district and its land parcels as productive as possible economic development infrastructure, and to even possibly amend this district agreement in the future as private investment increases, as predicted, off this invaluable new exit that will help create economic activity on a grand scale. Great-paying jobs will be created out of this Tax Increment Financing District in the kinds of commercial and manufacturing possibilities that are already being explored and planned. The Office of the Mid-Maine Chamber of Commerce and the Central Main Grove Council are finding fielding interest in this area on an increased level. Pumping the kinds of salaries this infrastructure will ultimately create over time will be extremely beneficial to our local economy in long term over the entire region. The infrastructure will also be a welcome presence to residential taxpayers who are struggling from day to day, week to week, in making their bills and finding enough funds left over to turn back into renovating or doing repairs on their homes. Being on the streets, I find this to be our greatest struggle from street to street. I urge this council to approve this Traptan Road Tax Increment Financing District as a positive step towards solidifying needed funds that will secure this area for further improvements and shelter its assessed value from county taxes, and add long-term economic development to a prime area that will bolster our local economy. Thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions? Everybody ready for a vote? Yes, Brad.
I just have one area to talk about, and it sounds like the TIF is a good idea. Go ahead and create the district. However, as far as the cost of the road that seems to be associated with this, we are being at the, the taxpayers, we need to have to put half a million dollars plus interest on the hook, because we signed a contract that says we will do that, even though we don't know who we're doing business with. This, the development of the road is for the benefit of Traptan Properties, who is, as far as my research goes, it's owned by American Capital. We don't know who owns American Capital. Nancy Waddell is the president, treasurer, secretary of American Capital, but we don't know if she's the owner, if she's the one who signed the contract or the cooperative agreement. We don't know if American Capital is owned by Nancy Waddell, or people right here within our town or within this room. We don't know who is asking the residents of Waterville to pay half a million dollars plus interest to build the road for their benefit. I think in the future, when TIFs are considered, or when the credit agreements are considered, we should ask for complete disclosure of who owns this.
Mike, that was a contract from years ago?
Well, the contract that Brad is referring to...
Right.
The cooperative agreement was certainly presented here for the council to approve, and that would have taken a two-vote thing, and it would have been done three years ago, probably?
Two thousand fourteen.
Fourteen. Okay, I was close. And that certainly, at that time, the council thought it was a very good deal. Our only obligation on that five-plus-million-dollar interchange was fixing up a road which we own, and we'd be responsible for fixing. As a result of this interchange, the state actually has now agreed to take ownership of what once was our road, relieving us for all those obligations in the future for repairing the Trachten Road, because it'll be a state-owned road. Our responsibility, as you mentioned, is to come up with five hundred thousand out of one point five million to rebuild it. That was a good deal back in two thousand fourteen, and it's still a good deal today.
Brad, the way I look at it is, to answer your question, I foresee Trachten Road, and I would imagine that there's probably other councils up here that feel the same way, a lot of people in the lot of them. The biggest problem that we have, actually, the former council that was sitting here, this one is way out, even said that's the big, one of the biggest issues in the City of Waterville, is the land area that we have, and the amount of taxable area, taxable land area that we have. Trachten Road and this area around Trachten Road is our last frontier. This is the last hurrah that the city has, that we'll capture as many taxable dollars as we can to try to relieve the taxpayers from losing the rest of the city. Of course, I mean, we could start talking about nonprofits and talking about the adjustments and how the taxpayer and the City of Waterville's kind of crunched down to kind of really bolster half of the, of the city, but really, we really need to capture as much as we can. An investment, I guess, is the best way to play it.
All right. I guess my point though is that we don't know how wealthy this corporation is. We don't know how much money they expect to make on this. If they expect to make ten, twenty million dollars on this, they could easily afford the half a million dollars and improve the road. There are other companies around the nation that do that.
I would just note that they...
We have no idea.
I would just note that they put two million dollars in so we can get a highway access.
And I doubt they borrowed for it.
That's all right. They paid for it. We didn't...
Yeah. They put another half a million dollars in. They did a lot.
But I guess, in the spirit of looking at things, I tend to look at things, I mean, I wasn't there for that agreement, that was the prior mayor and the prior council, but I still think, I'm sure they looked at it, and the way I've tried to look at things is in the spirit of being partners with people, and I think in this case, Mike pointed out, it was a road that we actually already owned, and we're going to be relieving ourselves from a lot of future costs by relieving us of that, that road by fixing it now.
I'll make a comment, just as an engineer, between Trachten Road and West River Road, five hundred thousand dollars to rebuild that road, the box cutting, that's a heck of a deal. It really is. And for the city to pick up that, you know, and you know me, I'm very stringent on my, my spending. I really, I, you know, I pinch those pennies as much as I can, but this is a great investment, and really, I think it's a good deal that we should capitalize on.
All right, we'll take them up. All those are paper. Resolution one forty-eight, twenty seventeen.
A resolution providing for issuance of a local food vendor license to Karen's Car, DVA, Central Maine Fair Food. Be resolved by the Waterville City Council acting as municipal officers that the City Council hereby authorize the issuance of a mobile food vendor license to Karen's Car doing business as Central Maine Fair Food at Seventy Seven College Avenue.
Any motion to adopt? Second. Any discussion?
Could we just have a little explanation, please? You know, about it, I mean, like, when she says mobile food cart, is she...
It's a mobile food cart. They have permission to be at that location, and they have come from out of town. I think they weren't very successful where they were, and they're hoping this is a better location. So hopefully, they'll do well there.
And where is Seventy Seven as compared to like the post office?
It's where the, it's up on College Avenue where the taxi stand used to be. It's a very small, little brick building there.
Yep. Got a few things in and out of there, two layers. Okay. All in favor? Resolution one forty-nine, twenty seventeen.
A resolution providing for renewal of a special amusement license to Yuno's Club. Be resolved by the Waterville City Council acting as municipal officers that the City Council hereby authorize the issuance of a special amusement license to Yuno's Club, fifty-five piece concourse.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All in paper? Resolution one fifty, twenty seventeen.
Second.
All in paper?
A resolution providing for issuance of a special amusement license to Cancun LLC, Sanchez LLC, doing business as Cancun National.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Discussion? All in paper? Resolution one fifty-one, twenty seventeen.
A resolution providing for appointing Mark Wardakar to the Waterville Public Library Trustees. Be resolved by the Waterville City Council, the City of Waterville, acting as municipal officers as follows, that the City Council hereby authorize the appointment of Mark Wardakar to the Waterville Public Library Trustees with a term to expire from two thousand nineteen.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Mark here.
As we've kind of gone in the past, and Cindy Jacobs went out and recruited who she thought was the best person for this, and being that, that board works exceptionally well together, I think it's, it's worked out well, just taking her recommendations.
Oh, no, I was just wanting to meet him.
No, I was just letting you out.
All right, all in paper? Resolution one fifty-two, twenty seventeen.
A resolution providing for referral to the planning board. Be resolved by the Waterville City Council acting as municipal officers that in accordance with Article seven, section seven dot one of the zoning ordinance, a proposal to amend the zoning map hereby refers to the planning board for public hearing and recommendation.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Planning board, all right, I'll wait for their recommendation. All in paper? Next is resolution one fifty-three, twenty seventeen. Second. All in favor?
An order providing for approval of...
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Planning board, all right, I'll wait for their recommendation. All in paper? Next is resolution one fifty-three, twenty seventeen. Second. All in favor?
An order providing for approval of...
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All in paper? Order one fifty-four, twenty seventeen.
An order providing for expenditure of downtown TIF funds. Be hereby ordered by the Waterville City Council acting as municipal officers as follows, that funds from the downtown TIF account used in the amount of four thousand, three hundred dollars to prepare a detailed survey plan of a former eldung inn property for the purpose of creating a public parking lot.
Any motion to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Second. Mike.
The survey work ended up costing a lot more than we originally thought because of the research that was required for the many deeds that was associated with that old inn that was sitting on the site. The city acquired that, I think, quite a long time before I got here, and I've been here twelve years. So it took more than what we thought, and this is a good example, with TIF funds, downtown TIF funds, of being able to spend those TIF monies on eligible activities that occur within the district. We don't have to spend our general tax dollars. We can spend our TIF dollars on this cost, because it's associated with creating extra parking in the downtown, which we need. So that lot has been graded and put, very good base of material put down, ready for pavement, which I hope is next year. And now we know exactly where our boundaries are.
So I would like to say as a member of the parking committee, that I'm very glad to see that we are moving forward with this. This is one of the issues that we discussed in several meetings. There was a lot of support for the development of this area to be publicly accessible for parking, and so I think this is a great, I'm happy to see that we're moving forward.
I concur.
Any other discussion? All in paper? Order one fifty-five, twenty seven.
An order providing for approval of environmental covenant. Be hereby ordered by the Waterville City Council acting as municipal officers as follows, that the city manager be authorized to execute an environmental covenant with the main property of environmental protection regarding the former Windout Lagoon property.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any questions?
Questions?
Standard procedure with DEP in regards to remediation of former lagoons. I'm familiar with it on the front end, but I'm curious on the back end, this is a, kind of a, goes with the, the property. Anybody that owns the property or if the city decides to sell, this environmental covenant gets attached to the deed, and all of a sudden, they're responsible for maintaining that lagoon.
Exactly.
Basically what this says.
Yeah. It's a warning, essentially, the environmental covenant is a warning to any future owner, right how we own it. We may well own it forever. So it's a warning to those people that follow us, years from now, that, hey, hey, you can't dig down on this site, because very, quite deep, I mean, under feet and feet of soil, is, you know, sediments from a lagoon, a treatment lagoon, from the Windout Mill when it was operating back in the eighties. So there were two treatment ponds on the site across from where the mill is on the West River Road, and those two treatment ponds were drained, and the sediment from one pond was excavated, put into the second pond. The ponds were both drained, so they weren't put in water, but they were put in dry into the other pond, and that one pond covered, and that's the one that has the covenants with it. You cannot dig into that site because of that. The other pond, where the other pond was, is fine. Those contaminated soils are removed, but all in one place.
Was this part of the VRAP or the voluntary response action?
Yeah, part of the VRAP voluntary response action plan. Actually, the city didn't...
So we weren't slapped with a fine by the...
No, no. Actually, what ended up happening years ago was the state said, would you please accept the property? Because we had back then, and actually it was when Paul Page was mayor, I don't remember the years, but it was at that time, the city was ready to foreclose on it, and we decided not to. Why would we want to own a contaminated site? But essentially, eventually, the state came forward and said, if you'll foreclose on it, take ownership, we will provide all the money necessary to clean the site up, which was a good thing. And then you can own it. You might have one area that's, has some contaminated soil, but the rest of the property is straight clear, so. Overall, it was very, I think, a good deal for the city.
Who would that be foreclosed from?
Whoever the owners were at that time. I don't remember the...
I've heard the name, I don't remember. So it's the case of the manufacturer that passed on the mail across to the community?
Well, passed it on to the state, therefore, the taxpayer at that state.
It's the river. Did it close back in the early 2000s? So you're looking at something that's thirty-five years old.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All in paper?
I have no management report. I think it was not here to make the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll do it.
You can do it.